Phil's got us on the air now. I wanted to start by, uh, represent everybody, uh, that we're being recorded tonight. And, um, we do have an eight o'clock public hearing, so we're gonna take care of a couple of things, uh, upfront. If we move everything along. I think I'd like to, um, bring back those, all we have, all we really got is, uh, to sign the restricted covenant, is that correct?
Right.
I went through it, I didn't see anything, you know.
You were fine?
Yeah, that I didn't recognize and out of the ordinary. So, um, did you take a vote for that to sign that, or was that?
I think you just signed it.
Yeah. I did a copy of the, so I can record. Thank you. Yeah, do you need to, right? That's, that's what it's called.
Do I need ballpoint or do I use my felt?
So while we're, uh, while we're doing that, I'm gonna, um, I'd like to move to 126 Main Street. We don't have anybody come, do we have a second?
Yes.
Yes, sir. I sat by him before he met in over a moment.
Yeah, that's fine, right where you are.
Okay, great. Good evening, David Clegg, on behalf of Alfred Antinucci, who is a unit owner at 126 Main Street Business Condominium. He's, uh, the original declarant, but is now currently the owner of four of those commercial units in that 11-unit business condominium. Essentially, the intent of my coming tonight was just for informational purposes. At this point, Mr. Antinucci has these four units, and two of the units in particular are being used for a tire and exhaust kind of, or small, small business. And, um, part of that business is every month there ends up being an overage of tires, or there could be, um, something commensurate with running that business that just by technicality will end up outside of the garage. So, to alleviate any issues or any future disagreements with the other members of the business condominium, Mr. Antinucci, as well as myself, and speaking with council for the business condominium, would like to speak with the board about the possibility of placing a 20-foot-long by essentially eight-foot-high storage container in the rear section of, um, of the site. For the majority in the rear of the site, it is undeveloped, it's all green space that leads into what appears to be wetlands. I do have here just a couple of overhead plans. One is a site plan that was originally recorded at the registry, however, has since been revised just to show, uh, corresponding parking spaces that are located at the unit. And I have a second overhead Google photograph that has been, um, that has, um, had essentially where the proposed storage container may be, and, uh, this was actually an overhead that was provided to me by Ms. Bazbans when I spoke with her, uh, to get some information, uh, from her as conservation agent regarding, uh, concerns about setbacks and the like, and the 12-foot no-stirred buffer. So, uh, 126 Main Street falls within, um, the his, uh, the highway.
Highway business?
Yeah, the Highway Business District, and, um, it is well within the minimum lot area. The building size is, well, the lot area is roughly around 52,500 square feet. The building's roughly 2, 12,650 square feet. And then the building itself is surrounded on all four sides by, um, or at least on three sides by parking. The idea with this storage container would be to locate it out of the way for a couple of reasons. Out of the way so it does not, um, take any space or parking spaces away from any of the tenants who are existing there now, while also, um, uh, complying with any concerns that the fire department may have with turning radius of fire energy engine. The, uh, the actual flow of, um, vehicles going through is typically coming in from Main Street and staying to the right of the building and going around, although I don't think as of my stopping there today that there's actually a way, but that's typically how they do it, from my understanding. So, um, you know, in terms of what the side setbacks are, rear setbacks, I'm not seeing at this point outside of, with the, uh, with the exception of possibly a side setback that, um, like any, uh, at least as to one side where, considering where we'd like to put it.
Let me ask you a couple of questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
The way you have it on this overhead plan, it looks like it might make that corner a little too tight for the fire engines. So I'm assuming that it wouldn't be quite that far forward. Um, and there's a couple of vehicles underneath that yellow thing, so does that mean those vehicles would be removed and the container would go there?
Correct, yeah, that's right. So, there is actually, oh, sorry.
You're gonna put a, uh, is it dirt right, it looks like it might be dirt right there?
Yes, so some of that is, uh, is permeable. I have spoken with Ms. Bazbans about that, and that's still, um, something that we need to discuss.
Are you gonna put anything underneath it, like a stone bed or some kind?
That would be a possibility, I mean, it wouldn't be, I mean, at least for the, uh, for the time period, this would be a storage container if that would just be essentially ancillary to the business.
So it's real, it's not a permanent, it's not a permanent, uh, thing, it's not a permanent construction, it's not gonna be a foundation?
Correct.
Or anything like that, so if you just put some stone underneath it and set it as a temporary, or basically it would be a temporary for some period of time, you really require a permit from the building developer?
Correct. Hey, just for purposes of the highways district under, um, business district under, uh, 200-39 A2F2. This, this is for like the outdoor storage of materials, i.e. through, via a storage container, and it's not possible without approval of site plan from the planning commission, so.
Well, if it's inside that container, then it's not inside storage. I think that the concept here is to try to not leave a mess out in the yard. Put everything away in the container and then work from there. Okay, so you're looking for direction tonight about which way you go with this?
Well, to your point, I also clarified whether or not the storage container itself, in and of itself, would have acted as, uh, outdoor storage, so.
No, if it's inside storage, if it's, it also says if it's fenced, you can have outside storage if it's properly fenced. In this case, it would be properly fenced all the way around, true.
So the idea.
Okay, so let me just check to the rest of the board, what do you, Chris, what do you say?
I don't think there's a problem, I mean, it's better to be, like, been back there.
It's better than having a mess.
Yeah, better than having a mess.
And the whole idea prior to my time was.
Dave?
Uh, yeah, I don't have a problem with it. I thought originally the request was gonna be more upfront, so where, where I see it is fine. I think you should try to get a little bit more specific about where it's at, because in the two different images, the, the line drawing, it shows it much further back, or maybe not to scale, and then the one that's aerial, it shows it as more pointed out, much more forward. So, as long as there's something telling what that clearance is, so the fire department knows they've got 25, they got whatever to make that corner. Yeah, so, um, and the other thing would just be, when you put a permanent structure like this, and a semi-permanent, whatever, and there's two things, you wanna keep it dry, right, so you're, with Conex boxes, they're pretty self-contained, but you might wanna get it up, but the problem is sometimes when you get it up, you create a spot for pests, raccoons, things.
That's why you do, if you do, since having done many of these, if you do a stone, if you do a stone bed underneath it.
It'll drain right through it. I was gonna say, because that, you don't wanna really put it up and leave a void with these Conex boxes.
So you put like three-quarter stone down, you run the stone right up against the edge of it, nothing goes under there. And also, fire can't get under there and so forth, so that's, uh, so that's the best way to do that, as a temporary storage situation.
Do you recommend three-quarter stone with blocks underneath?
No, you don't wanna leave a void under there, unless you leave a big void, I mean, if you left it, if you had it two feet in the air, that'd be okay. But if you're not gonna have it two feet in the air.
It's only that much.
Burying the bottom of it in stone so that you won't have any, you get no pests and.
Right, I think your question.
No fire, nothing can get under it.
But the question, Mr. Chairman, that he asked, I think is a good one. Because of the weight, those units are extremely heavy, and then filled with rubber tires, whatever they'll leave. You should probably put it on some sort of drainage, but as Warren said, then just build up around those edges with some sort of stone or on a stone bed, because it will just start sinking, seeing, you know, that, you know, sink one corner or whatever, but you can always jack that up and throw, throw some shims under it or whatever, like, that's what I would do.
This three-quarter stone usually does the job. I have a number of, like, that, like, bag, done it, and then you don't move, you know. No, you know, not, we're not talking two inches of stone, we're talking six inches of stone.
Yeah, it's deep.
Yes, and then, and then bring the stone around the side so that, so that there is no access underneath it, so that it's safe.
Definitely no access, yeah.
You know, that's all, it's no big deal, takes no time. Jeremiah?
Yeah, I mean, the choke point in the corner, what you already mentioned.
The fire department's gotta sign off on that.
Yep, yep, yep.
Right, so I.
So basically, what we would probably need is, as Dave mentioned, is a plan a little more precise with actual dimensions, you know, um, maybe a plan with the scale plan, scale plan with the container on it scaled, so that we can see exactly how it goes. We can make the fire department happy, and that's probably what all you would require.
Right.
What kind of, um, would there be a filing with us at all?
Uh, it's a temporary structure, so it doesn't, it's not something that, that's, that's affect site plan.
Okay.
In other words, it could be removed at any time, there's no foundation.
Right.
And everything, and if it's, uh, becomes a, a situation where it's too small, they may come back and want a 40 footer.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, so, uh, again, that makes it a temporary restructuring.
Okay, great.
It's not permanent.
Yeah, that's right.
But he still has to go to the building inspector for this.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And then, you know, site setbacks and stuff, I think for this is like 10 feet, right? Warren, it is a residential at least, for a temporary building, it's 10 feet outside. I don't know what it is for, in this area, off the top of my head.
You all set?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate your time. Thank you, David.
And again, thank you, Dave, for clarifying all those things ahead of the time.
Yeah.
It saved a lot of questions.
That was, that's why I like to read that, I read your letter, and I read your responses, and.
The back doesn't matter so much.
And then I looked at where it was, and I said, oh, this is in the back, and it's where it should be.
Did everyone sign the covenant?
Yeah.
Okay, um, Chris, will you do the, some minutes while I save a little bit?
Sure. Hang on, let me get there.
It's probably emotional.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, uh. Actually, I'm on, I'm sorry. And a motion simple, disappear, so that we accept the minutes of Tuesday, April 5th, 2022, as written.
I have a motion to have second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and second. Any further discussion? Corrections or omissions, nothing? Okay, all those in favor, if you say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Oath?
I'm gonna abstain, Mr. Chris.
Okay, I bet.
I was not here for this meeting.
But did you read the minutes?
I read the minutes, but.
Then you can vote on them, if you like.
I suppose I can.
Yes, you can.
Make it aye then.
Okay, then I have four in favor, no oaths, um, Chair, we'll talk here.
No, no.
Do you want to, uh, copy each of your records, Danielle?
Oh, uh, uh, sure, thank you, that'd be great.
Yeah, you know, because I mean, obviously, we're gonna get something a little more, you know, in the future.
Thank you.
As we, uh, as we go along. Oh, okay. Alrighty. Okay, um, so at the last meeting, we were talking about nominating me to press to be EDC, but you were not here, and I would not do that to you without you being here, so I told them I would not vote unless you were here, so.
Thank you, Warren.
Are you okay to beat on that?
I am for now.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay. So, uh, do you think?
I have a, I have a motion.
I have a motion, okay, well, yeah, do your motion.
Yeah, no, Dave's gonna do it.
Dave's gonna do the motion.
Do more, do your, do your thing. I moved that the community planning commission moved to appoint Chris Hayden as the CBC representative member to the economic development committee during the period starting April 19th to May 9th, April 19th, 2022 to May 19th, 2023. Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing that, all favorably say aye?
Aye. I'm gonna abstain. I always abstain, you need me.
I'll let the record show three in favor and one abstention, and that is the end.
One pose.
And that is the end.
I never voted myself for anything. Unless you need me, I mean, if I was a part of the quorum, then I would vote.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the EDC, they're working away, trying to get some more things done, so, uh.
Yeah. That's a philosophy, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be at this meeting. I might get shot, but I will be. 26 is the white split there.
Oh. No.
So what, do they have, do they have anything, I know they were doing, looking at some.
Yeah, we're working on, uh, some stuff for, um, another, like, coffee, coffee shop, actually, more of it in the evening, right?
Yeah, like the June event last year.
We had one last year, um, which really went off well, um, business people came, a lot of people came, but a lot of business people showed up, a lot of community, uh, committee people showed up, um, from other, other commissions and committees, um, which is good, got to know people, heard a little bit about Seward, met Joe.
Yeah, Joe's good.
Yeah, he's great.
He's very knowledgeable, he did what he did, and I talked to him for a while. Yeah, he did a bunch of different, a bunch of different jobs in different towns relating to getting Seward put in and doing it, so he's very knowledgeable, so. If you read that proposal we put together, it was quite good.
Yes. Yes.
So. All right, um. Okay, we got a few more. I didn't see the ZBAs in there, a ZBA?
Uh, no.
Okay, um, if you, um, in the five minutes before we have a, excuse me, a community public hearing, do you have any updates or anything on that?
Sure, um.
I know you got a couple things, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to mention, um, we should have a draft very soon to share of the Route 28 corridor study. Um, I did see a preliminary draft, um, I did want the opportunity to check with the town engineer to be sure he's read it, and there isn't anything major that he wouldn't want included in that, um, but I'm hoping either for our next meeting or possibly the one after, we would have a draft to look at, maybe give them some feedback. It seems to be set up in such a way that it's not a strong recommendation of you should do it this way or that way, but here are all the different things you might do with the corridor, and if you do it, these will be the impacts, and it kind of shows the corresponding traffic impacts to each one of them, and they go through, and they do a pretty nice job of, um, highlighting what all the repairs are that actually could be made right now, um, that DOT should, should be doing, even if we did nothing else, which would really improve some things, so, um, I'm hoping to have that draft to share with you, um, hopefully by our next meeting. I did go ahead and submit the, uh, community information form that's required for the MBTA communities, it was due, uh, May 2nd. It's really just the information form to say that we, uh, believe we do have a district that would be a good candidate for meeting the regulations, though, um, it does not fully comply, and so, um, we would request, you know, any technical assistance or grant funding that would be available, um, to help us.
Have we gotten any updates on, on the criteria? I mean, it seemed to me that there are a number of towns, and we talked about Reading, for example, and where are they gonna go? So, I mean, I mean, where they would be, where you could either opt out or get, um, a waiver as a result of the fact that you don't like. For example, we don't have any MBTA services in our town, so we don't have any place where we could put something that, unless they're gonna bring us a train line or a bus or something, you know, which, you know, that happened in any town soon.
They did write that in to, they, even if, in this situation, they still expect us to have a district, um, it's just that there's no requirement that it be within a certain distance of any train station. We definitely did include that, though, in the comments that were submitted, um, that was, and it was mentioned at that, uh, meeting that we had with the select board, that there should be some type of waiver, and that was definitely included in those comments, but we won't have the final draft guidelines, um, probably until the summer. So what I'm hearing from the other communities is that they're not doing any work on this really yet, until those final guidelines come out, because if those are very different, then a lot of work will be wasted, so.
Well, I'm wondering if they, I'm wondering if they, um, if what they're looking for is for us to commit, uh, say, okay, we have an area that we think could be the area, and so, so we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna put that out there as the area we're gonna use to comply, and then they're gonna come back and say, well, it looks like we could probably get a bus to that area. In other words, if we do opt out first, will they be there part second?
I don't think they're offering that at all, so I think that's a problem.
But that may be in the plan, you know?
I doubt it.
It hasn't been, yeah, there's really no plan to expand their service at, at all, um, so.
It's just that I'm surprised that it's a little fast and loose right now, you know, and they're asking us to do something, and they don't even have all of the details worked out yet.
Well, they just have the draft guidelines, which means that we, we really shouldn't do anything definitive, um, they're kind of collecting the information from each community, and they wanna know what we think we can comply with, um, we know we don't comply, but we do have some districts that are decent candidates for coming into compliance, so I, you know, I reported that and described what we do have, um, but in terms of knowing exactly what our guidelines will be that we actually have to adhere to, we won't really know that until the summer, so I, we're, I think we're okay to, to wait until that happens, to really see what we're responsible for. So, um, that's, you know, as soon as I get those guidelines, I'll be sure to share them with you. I'm sure it's gonna be quite a bit of work to figure out.
It seems like a little bit of the cock before the horse, but we'll see.
With an end date, that's soon.
Yeah.
Um, I have a couple of, uh, projects that we're expecting to see submittals for pretty soon, um, the Anthony Road subdivision, um, sounds like it's coming back in.
It's coming back in.
Yeah, yeah, um, there's been a little bit of a holdup, I guess, um, National Grid, they, they really wanted National Grid to review everything before it came in, which I said is a really good idea, because the last time it was a, it was a big issue.
That's the crossing over there, right? The right-of-way, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's a good idea to get a full signed-off disclosure from them.
It's been very delayed on their part, though.
Are they proposing changes to the plan other than things that might be required by National Grid? Because if I recall, one of those houses, uh, when Anthony Road's gonna be an affordable house, affordable.
Yeah, that corner.
I don't know if they've completely started from scratch, or I haven't seen their plan at all, so I'm not really sure what they have in mind, um, but I, I think it will be coming in soon. So, um, and then the other project, I just checked in with, um, Attorney Latham about the 148, 150 Park Street project, because I do get calls every so often, um, people really wanna see that built, um, and they expect to file soon. So I think we'll be, we'll have probably those two projects to be working on by the summer. I wanted to mention, as, as Chris mentioned, the economic development committee is planning two events this year, one in the fall and one in the spring, and the one in the spring, they are hoping to have on May 24th, um, working on a venue, but, uh, that's supposed to be the date. I'll give you more information as we have it. And the Kleinfelder study for the sewer planning is, is underway, um, we've given them a lot of contacts for businesses to reach out to, and, um, Joe has been working really closely with them to figure out what the assessments might look like, and they're gonna be sending out some communications soon to businesses and to residents to, um, start, you know, asking questions, a survey will be part of that for, um, selected businesses and selected properties of, you know, a certain size, and, um, you know, there will be another type of outreach for, for everybody else. So, um, that's underway, and, um, I should mention Charles Street, since I haven't in a while.
I was gonna say.
I didn't ask you this time.
No, you, you didn't, but it's, it's a little bit of a mess, so I just wanted to bring it up, it's just, it's got a lot of sediment and kind of, um, erosion controls are not being kept up with, and so, you know, between, you know, Dave Giangrande and, you know, Leah Bazbans and myself were communicating with the owner to, to get that something up.
Leah has some issues out there, too.
Yes, yes, she does, so Leah and I are meeting, um, with the owner, um, on Tuesday morning, so we're gonna talk through those things. Dave gave me a punch list of everything he wants to see done ASAP, certainly before it really starts, you know, vegetating. I drove through, and it, it really does, it really does still look messy, so.
That is gonna be a difficult project, no matter what. That was a difficult site.
For sure.
Oh, yeah.
So, that's all I have.
Good. Well, we're just, I'm seeing 8:02, 8:02, I'm gonna open the continued public hearing for 14 Concord Street Site Plan Review. I can move now, so. I don't do anything quickly. That's the DCI. Oh, right, no, you didn't.
Should we have them do it now?
Probably.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think we ever read the public hearing notice into the record last time, because we just opened it and continued it, so I think we will need to do that.
Do you have one of those?
Oh, sure, I, I mean, I think it's on.
It is on.
Oh, but none of you can see it, because you can't get your 14 Concord Street. All right.
Now that you're ready. Oh, I thought you were waiting to read the notice.
We were just waiting for Debbie to get the hearing notice, yeah, it's in the file.
I was just having a good time.
Just hanging up, dude?
Yeah, just trying to get. How is it, it's good to see everybody in person, I can't believe it's been so long.
It's been, uh.
It's been a long time.
Right. It's been almost two years.
Yeah, well, we were back in person for a while last summer.
Right, and then.
And not for long.
I think I came in once.
I think we showed you that, too.
I think once I came in in the summer, and then you went back to being.
We're low, resuming.
There's a lot of benefits and a lot of detriments to Zoom.
It's, it's great for easy meetings, but when you've gotta look at plans.
Oh, I couldn't.
It's hard to ask a question about a plan when you're looking at it this size, or even on a computer bigger, um, so. Whenever I was in, whenever I was in Zoom, my iPad would see it, but I was always looking here, because I was, I was on my Apple, my bigger monitor, looking at.
But it makes sense, because also, you know, I'm controlling the screen when you're looking, so I'm putting up what I wanna show you, and then I don't exactly know maybe what you wanna see, you can't. Much better in person when it's a complicated project. If you're coming in for a simple, you know, setback issue for a house, okay, garage for a house, non-formal use, easier.
Yeah.
On Zoom, but not for a big garage. And I think with the last project I did, we came in, in person for a lot of it. It was just the final wrap-up that we ended up, you know, doing on Zoom. But the good thing about Zoom was we got a lot of participation.
Yeah, a lot of people were in.
A lot of people weren't able to participate in the, because they were, um. They didn't have to leave the house? Yeah, they could just, yeah, they didn't have to go.
Mr. Pierce?
Mr. Hayden.
Notice is hereby given that the North Reading Community Planning Commission will hold the public hearing on Tuesday, April 5th, in room, uh, 2022, in room 14 of the North Reading Town Hall at 8:00 p.m. on the application of Sergio Coviello for a site plan review for the property located at 14 Concord Street. Plan entitled Site Plan, 14 Concord Street, Town of North Reading, Assessors map 18, parcel 15, drawn by LJR Engineering Incorporated. A copy of this plan is on file for the Community Planning Commission Office Monday through Thursday, 8:00 to 4:00 p.m., 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
Okay.
Motion?
Thank you.
No?
No, that's just reading.
Just reading. Sorry. Attention.
Phil?
Good evening, Jill Mann from Mann and Mann, located in Middleton on, on, uh, South Main Street. I am the, um, legal counsel for Sergio Coviello in connection with his application. Here with me this evening is Luke Boy from LJR Engineering, also Joe Tutton, who is the architect, and Rebecca Brown from GPI, who is the traffic engineer. Obviously Sergio Coviallo is here, as well as Jagger Coviallo, principals with regard to Coviallo Electric, which will be the primary tenant of the property. So as you all know, this property happens to be what we re-permit or rezoned this past summer from residential to industrial office. The property is 14 acres, and we do show it here. Luke will go through the plan with you in more detail than I will, but I'll at least give you the summary. So it's a 14-acre parcel, approximately 11 acres, which are located in the Aquifer Protection District. As you can see, Luke outlined it in yellow for you, so that you could actually see where that district is. There are a lot of wetlands on the property, and I think we even talked about this during the rezoning, and it was, previously it had been used as a farm, a turkey farm. This is also the project that has that paper street that runs on the side of it. So I'm gonna keep, so this is probably the better plan to look at, so this does still show the existing improvements, which are those farms that have been taken out. The existing single-family home uses are going to stay, so we'll keep the residential uses in the front, because this is a separate parcel of land that we're going to access. Basically, when we had gone out there to the site, it became pretty tight because of the existing wetlands and where they were located, so we had to break the project into two buildings instead of having it into one building. As a result of that, we're going to do it in two phases, so I described it in my, my application. Sorry, something stabbed me. I got my own book. We were going to break down into two phases, basically because the Covials really want to relocate their business to this particular property, so Phase 1 is going to be that 22,000 square foot building that will serve as the principal locations for Coviallo Electric. They are going to have a mezzanine, but it's only going to be for storage, so there won't be any lift, it's not going to be elevated, it won't be, so to speak, accessible, because literally it's going to be just storage. They do have an outdoor storage component, just like they do currently at their existing building. They even have a fuel supply place, and I noticed that a couple, a couple of times it was mentioned, is the fuel storage within the Aquifer Protection, or is it outside of it? And that was mentioned by both the planner, Ms. McKnight, and the fire department. Those fuel storage tanks are located intentionally outside of the Aquifer Protection District, because we're required to do that. One of the other elements of the Aquifer Protection District is you can't render impervious more than 15% of the area, and we comply with that, we're under, even though this entire building and its development is in the Aquifer Protection District. And again, basically because it's such a section of land that is in that particular area. So the property has been required, and we cut in a new roadway and a new access. As a result of that, we did hire a traffic consultant, who is Ronald, to basically review and to confirm that the site is going to be safe from a site distance perspective, access perspective, and then also what the contributing issues are on the roadway. She did make a couple of suggestions of what we can do to just improve the general area and its current condition, and those are included in that report, and Ms. Brown can go through the report. We did submit a full stormwater report. We do have all of the plans showing the setbacks, the wetland, and by the way, we did apply already and submit the notice of intent to the constipation commission, and had had a meeting. We would have been here first, but, you know, it didn't work out, so we had the meeting like right after the original meeting was scheduled, and we're due back in, so, when are we due back, Sunday?
Second Wednesday in May.
Second, okay, second Wednesday.
We're doing a site visit with them this coming Saturday.
Oh, so they'll, okay, so there's a site, so I don't know, sometimes the planning board members like to attend that as well. If you do, it's Saturday, what time?
I'd have to look at mine.
I can, I can get that information to Ms. McKnight tomorrow, if somebody would like to attend that meeting, but Saturday. So our purpose is to be able to get the notice of intent submitted, heard, and in order issued before you render your decision or any soltations. Again, it's a 22,000 square foot building. We did provide you with a full landscape plan, and we did comply with all of the setbacks.
Which one?
Landscape. Landscape, yep. I have my Van Nuys right here.
He knows where all of his drawings are. He won't rip up either.
Right. I'm right there. There you go. So we comply with all of the landscaping requirements, which say you have to maintain a certain amount of landscape buffer when you invite a residential area, even though we don't literally invite any, any residential use other than upfront on our own property, and we did landscape for it. I'm gonna let Luke go through the whole stormwater discussion with you, but I just wanted to go through this part. So we plan on, once we get approval, we would begin the building as soon as we could get a building permit. We're anticipating, once we finish it completely, everything's done fully, then we would start Phase 2. However, because we will be in the middle of doing stormwater, the reason why we want to get it all done at once is because they aggregate no matter what, so we do have a stormwater facility out behind the building, plus there's a wetland crossing, so we really had to permit this all at once, even though the actual construction, the crossing will be done, the storm will be made, but the building itself will not be built until the existing Coviallo building is complete and activated. Just so you can see this, here's a copy of what the building is going to look like in its completed state. So again, we do have a mezzanine, so we do show windows on the top, just to give it some visual appeal. The entrance, you can see, we are proposing, obviously, to fence it, because we have outdoor storage. So as an requirement of the outdoor storage is to create a fence. We have a fence, we have a gate, and then it goes back around, and then to the back building, kind of a round building, which you saw in the plan. Just want to show you a couple of those. Here are those. This is Joe Tutton's beautiful work. And I did include for you the floor plans, so you can see them. So basically, you would come in, here is the entrance, this is, this would really be where you enter around the side of the building. This is not a dumpster, it's a, it's a completely enclosed, basically, contactor for all the cardboard they have, so that's where this is. The dumpster's around the back, and we'll be here in a few days. And here we go, this is just how we're going to have, we have one loading dock and then one drive-in door for the facility. And again, the storage is around the back of the building. And that's it. So at this point, I think it's probably a good idea if I turn it over to Luke, can he give you more details? And then if you'd like to hear, Rebecca can give you some details also about the traffic, and if you have questions, I can answer them, too.
Thank you, Jill.
You're very welcome.
So I'll just briefly summarize some of the engineering aspects that went into the site design. One of the main things was the topography and grading of the site, mainly with the highest elevations being along Concord Street, and then the lowest elevations at the wetlands, and then ultimately at the Ipswich River at the very back boundary of the site. So the, it was really a balancing, cut and fill, in the sense that a level slab building of this size, we're cutting to some extent at the front of the site, and the driveway's gonna be, you know, downgrading, coming into the site, dropping into where the building is. The septic system is elevated at the front, and then, and then a fill through this rear side, with some retaining walls, stormwater areas at the, at the down gradient, at the low side of the, of the site. We've got 24-foot-wide drive, access driveway through the site, wetland crossing, as Jill mentioned, here, for access to the rear building, and replication area here. One of the other main parts to the design that was kind of important and critical in this case is the stormwater design, the site being within the Aquifer Protection District, and also adjacent to the Ipswich River. We paid special attention to the stormwater regulations, not only the town by law, but the DEPs of stormwater regulations, in complying with those requirements for pretreatment. We've got a deep sump, wooded catch basins throughout the site for collection. We've got pretreatment structures, oil grid separator tanks, sediment four bays, and then infiltration basins strategically located at collection points for the stormwater. And we've documented, documented all of the, the details of that in the stormwater report. And I know that, I understand DCI has been engaged as far as the review. I would certainly look forward to addressing any comments or input that they have, and also the commission, any initial comments or questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, I have a question. Luke, where's, show me where the fence line would be, the proposed fence line around the building?
There's a fence and a gate right here, and then it'll continue, it'll carry on the top of this retaining wall to the stormwater basin there.
So it's mainly all just the area where you have the outside storage?
Right.
Okay. I didn't know how far, if it went all the way up to the main road.
No fencing at this speed here? Yeah, it just closes to the building right there.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Height of the building?
Thirty, 29. Twenty-nine, it's just under 30 feet.
Okay, which is within the spec of it.
Right, because, you know, when you go in with the, with the big trucks and everything, that's why it's.
Yeah, it's all, all steel? Steel skin?
One other question, maybe more traffic on the suggestions. Was there sightline coming, looking back towards Bobcat? Is there anything on Bobcat property that you recommended be pulled back a little bit?
How about we have, if I could give you a brief, because there are some things she strongly suggested that we're gonna do, and I think it's, the traffic pull as well, very important.
I know this might be a little hard to see from there, but we can kind of point to it and explain. So we did put together a traffic impacts assessment for this project, which really looked at how much traffic would be generated, and then focused mostly on the safety of the driveway itself, based on the fact that this is a pretty low traffic generator, even with the two phases combined, so we really were focused on just the safety of the driveway. But we did look at trip generation for the site, and we used the standard Institute of Transportation Engineers, or ITE data that was available. And then we also got some information from the applicant on their existing facility for the numbers of employees that they have, and the number of deliveries and construction vehicles that they have, or, not construction vehicles, but.
Service.
Yeah, the number of contracting vehicles, that's what we're contracting, that construction, contracting vehicles that are coming in and out. So we, even though they're coming out during an extended period, we looked at a worst-case scenario, if they were all coming in and out during the same peak hour, what would that generate for traffic? And so with the two buildings combined, it would be roughly 47 trips during an hour if we were to combine all the employees that arrive over a three-hour period into one hour. So pretty low volume traffic that would be generated by this. We did also look at the collision history along this section of roadway, starting from the Bobcat driveway, going all the way up to Park Street, over the most recent five-year period, to see how many crashes had actually occurred there. And then we compared that to the state and the district-wide averages for similar types of roadway. And what we found was that the crash rate for this section of roadway is about half of what the state and district-wide average is. But what we did note is that the majority of the crashes that were happening there, although there is a low number, were speed-related. So there were two that had occurred as vehicles were going around this curve by the Bobcat driveway, or just north of it, where vehicles went off the road. And then there were also two sideswipe crashes and two head-on crashes that happened in that same area from vehicles that crossed over the center line while they were coming around this curve right here. And that's really important when we look at travel speeds on the roadway. So in order to assess the sightlines on the road, we did do a speed study, too, to look at travel speeds. And right now, headed northbound through this curve, it is posted at 40 miles per hour, and traveling southbound is posted at 30 miles per hour. So there's quite a difference there in, in what's posted. The actual observed speeds, or 85th percentile speeds, that's the speed that about 85% of the road going at or below, and is generally considered the design speed of the roadway, was 38 to 39 miles per hour, depending on direction. So significantly higher than the posted 30 mile per hour southbound, but consistent with a 40 mile per hour northbound. In the vicinity of this curve, there are currently no curb advisory warnings, signs that are located out there, that you would typically see going around the curve. In addition, if you're coming off of Park Street and you're turning on to Concord Street, there is an existing 30 mile per hour speed limit sign, but it's located on a utility pole that's set far back from the edge of the roadway, and it's almost entirely blocked by vegetation. You have to really look to see that sign, which we believe is probably contributing a little bit to the high travel speeds going southbound, so that was the 39 mile per hour speed was headed southbound through, through this area. So some of the recommendations that we made were to post advisory, curb advisory signs in advance of this curve from either direction, and supplement that with the curb advisory speed placers, so that it would note that this curve should be traveled at 30 to 35 miles per hour, depending on the, the radius of, of this curve. And then also relocating the sign that is located up by Park Street, so that it will be posted on a signpost and be visible, and then supplement that with those orange flags that are on the top of the sign to help draw attention to it, so that people notice that there, that the roadway is posted for 30 miles per hour. When we looked at the sightlines for the proposed driveway, we did find that, looking to the south near the Bobcat, that the sightlines there do actually meet ASCHO's minimum recommendations for the 85th percentile speeds. So there is adequate sightline there going to the south. Where we actually found that there was some deficiency was looking to the north as you're exiting the site driveway, where right about in this area here, there's some trees that are located there, as well as a little bit of an embankment that was blocking the intersection sightlines. So we did recommend some re-grading in here, which has been reflected on the site plans. And with that re-grading, you will be able to meet ASCHO recommendations for the minimum required site distance in that direction. But there is also a crest in the roadway, a vertical crest in the roadway, right about in this location right here. And when you're approaching along Concord Street, approaching the driveway, you would not be able to see far enough ahead of you if you're traveling at that 39 mile per hour speed that people are traveling right now, to be able to see a vehicle that is coming out of the site driveway. So the car that's approaching here wouldn't have enough time to see somebody that's approaching. That's the only one that does not meet the, the ASCHO recommended sightlines. We can't extend that one without re-grading the entire roadway in this area, and with the grades of the properties that are immediately adjacent, and those buildings immediately adjacent, we wouldn't be able to re-grade the roadway. However, we would only need to lower the travel speed on that roadway by one mile per hour in the southbound direction, to be able to have the sightlines meet ASCHO requirements. And so that is why we're recommending those speed measures, to relocate the posted speed limit sign and post curb advisory signage as well, to help slow people down. And then another measure that could also help to increase the sightlines in both directions coming out of the driveway would be, as you're traveling northbound on Concord Street, coming out of the driveway would be, as you're traveling northbound on Concord Street, right now it's striped for a 15-foot wide travel lane and a one-foot shoulder, which with a 15-foot travel lane gives people the impression that they can travel pretty quickly around that curve. So what we would recommend doing is actually narrowing the roadway to provide a 12-foot travel lane and a four-foot shoulder in that area. By providing, by narrowing the roadway, it should act as a traffic calming measure to slow people down, but also by having that wider shoulder, it gives somebody who's exiting the driveway the opportunity to kind of stop at the stop bar, check for traffic, and then inch up a little bit into that shoulder, to see a little bit further along the roadway, to increase the sightlines there.
Can I ask a question? How much does the elevation of the driveway itself, where you're coming out of, play a role in some of the sightlines, especially to, I guess, to the north, where it seems like that's the...
Yeah, so that's, that's the one that is the tricky one, is going to the north, and that's why we recommend that.
So are you just at, are you just at the, pretty much the grade of the street, and there's not, I know it goes downgrade to the, to the building, but can you elevate that a little bit to have that kind of staging area, so you get a good lookout?
Yeah, so shifting the driveway any further north really quickly steepens it that much more, and the driveway's probably about as steep as we really would be comfortable having.
Gotcha, gotcha. That would help a little bit.
We've got it kind of to like the best balance of those interests that we felt matched.
What's the grade of the driveway as it enters onto Park Street?
I'm trying to remember, I, I could take a measurement and tell you what that percentage is, but it was getting up there where it was, I wouldn't be comfortable making it much steeper than it is, especially with the vehicles and equipment that they do.
Yeah, that was kind of the next, one of the questions I had, what's, you gonna have tractor-trailers come in and up?
Just for the loop. And we needed to have a little bit of a landing area, you know, rather than, we can't just drop right off.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta make more difference. So you're gonna have, you're gonna have a flat area.
Yep.
The thought, of course, was that if the area going on to the, onto Concord Street was fairly level and not too steep, that we'd have the ability to maybe make it a little bit higher, so we could see a little further.
Yeah, so the issue isn't actually on the site itself, so with the regrading in this area here, you can get adequate sightlines for the vantage point from the driver sitting on the driveway and looking out. It's actually a long Concord Street, coming up over that hill and then down, that you wouldn't be able to see.
You're saying slow it down like to 37 miles an hour? Not to the posted 30. The 30, the posted 30 gives you plenty of sight view, it's like they're traveling by, they're almost 10 miles an hour over that.
So what you have for visibility from this point, you know, back over the crest, is adequate for speeds of 38 miles per hour. We measured 39 miles per hour, so we just, we need to slow people down just a little bit, and they'll have adequate stopping sight distance.
These recommendations you make, are these recommendations that the town would do, or the Sergio would do?
Yeah, these could be done as mitigation, as a condition of...
The narrowing of the street, I understand the logic, but if there is, you know, bigger trucks coming and going, it seems like narrowing the streets on that stretch could be a little bit dangerous, so if you do have some pretty heavy, heavy trucks that travel down that road.
Yeah, and the strike wouldn't be able to, you know, go over onto the shoulder a little bit, they could overhang onto the shoulder if they needed to, but a 12-foot lane around that curve should be more than enough for a tractor-trail truck to have an effect there.
It occurs to me that since Mr. Pobiel already has a place on Concord Street, he's already driving back and forth on that road, so the actual increase will be, however he grows.
Would actually get a lot less, yeah.
Is the increase to the four-foot shoulder just adjacent to the entrance, like a certain distance on each side of the entrance?
Yeah, so it's really just a restriping of the roadway, it's not...
I think that's a good, I actually think that's a good idea.
Yeah, so right now it's a 15-foot travel lane, which allows people to travel faster.
Yeah, it doesn't change the asphalt. It changes the, it changes the line, which brings people, oh, wait a minute, it's a little narrow up here. It's a corner comes up.
It gives people the impression...
Well, it moves people a little further out into the street too, which means that they're, that they will be visible from a longer, further distance, because it more into the street as opposed to being on the sides.
Yes.
Any other questions on traffic here?
Very helpful.
Thank you. Thank you, good job. Okay. Any further questions from the guy? I see you've got a lot of work to do as far as for mitigation of the water in the wetland areas.
Right, so, yes, we still have more work to do before the Conservation Commission, and obviously DCI's review, he is just starting it, like, if anything, maybe this week, I don't even know if he will, so usually it'll take Dave at least three weeks to get your comment letter, and then we need Luke to respond back, so that will take at least a couple of weeks, so we are looking a little bit of delay, because we have to have that conservation meeting, because we'd really rather have that and Dave's comments before we turn the plan again.
Okay, I have a question for Luke, you mentioned you have a replication area, is there an area of flood plain that you're filling in, is that why you do the application?
Crossing, I think. It's the BVW impact, yeah, so it's, there is a flood zone, 100-year flood elevation, but it's confined within the rear wetland area that we're not impacting, but the replication is BVW, it's not flood compensation.
Oh, it's not flood, okay.
So this is one and a half times the area of the...
The crossing.
The crossing, yeah. What do you use for the next crossing, reinforced concrete for it, or?
Open bottom box cover.
Okay, I, I mean, it's not, it's not a dust, I just wanted to know.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Any other eventing on this?
No, only, I was just going to mention that DCI will be beginning their review soon.
They're reviewing it. It looks like a, it looks to be like a reasonable plan, a reasonable use of the land, so I hope it all works out well.
I do, I do have one question.
Go ahead, Chris.
The Phase Two building, what's that gonna be used for?
So, uses, permitted uses in the IO district, if we were to have built it now, we would be looking for the same exact type of uses they have, because we would have liked to have made it one big building.
Yeah.
So it would have been the same types of, offices, maybe there would be a little bit of outdoor storage with it, who knows, but back there, there is no outdoor storage, it's just gonna be, you know, offices with some indoor storage, and then parking, that's it.
I was just, just curious.
No, well, certainly, it's a good question.
Do you, Sergio, do you intend to use that rear building for your business, or you could, okay, so that's gonna be like a rental property?
Exactly, it would be third-party, so, unless, of course, they just were group oversized, right?
We're gonna use it.
Yeah. Short-term leases, just...
More traffic stops.
Yeah.
Sorry, Jerry.
Okay, well, thank you very much, that's what we have, and I guess we'll wait to hear from Dave.
Did you want to open it up?
We want to open it up.
Oh, we can open it up to the public, right? We don't, we haven't. Okay, this is a public hearing, that is correct, so we'll open it up to the public.
We're a little messy.
Do you direct all questions through the chair?
I don't.
Name and address when you ask a question. Any questions from the public? Okay, well, we're gonna leave it open as a public hearing anyway, that is because we're gonna, we'll still be receiving more information from, from our peer new manager as well, and at that point, we'll, we will come back and review the hearings to us, so. Okay, you want to say that?
Yeah.
Good, Dave.
So I just wanted to mention that our next meeting would have been May 3rd, but that's because that's Election Day, we will not be meeting that night, so our next meeting date is scheduled for May 17th.
So, do you think, I apologize for interrupting, do you think they will have a comment? I just don't want the board to have to have us come back in and...
They'll have all our comments taken care of.
Yeah, I would rather be able to have Dave's comments responded, and honestly, I think with, Luke, what do you think, if Dave were to issue you, do you think two weeks is enough?
It really depends on the nature of the comments, and how, like, involved it is to do the...
So it's gonna be at least, a minimum, two to three weeks, so with Dave, you've gotta figure five to six weeks minimum of us before we could have a good plan to you, so...
Is anybody due any drainage checks yet, or are we gonna wait for, are they able to do that?
I mean, DCI's doing all that, I'm not sure if John, the town agent, will be involved at all.
I was, Danielle, I was...
He won't be doing any of the review, I'll be sharing DCI's review with him, and then making sure any concerns he may have are addressed, but no, DCI really will be doing that. I mean, our upcoming meeting dates after that would be June 7th and 21st.
Yes.
June 7th being the day after town meeting.
I'm actually away, and I come back on the 7th.
Is there a second meeting?
The next meeting in May is, well, actually, the only meeting in May is May 17th, because we're missing May 3rd.
So Sergio's asking if we could do it on May 17th, because I can't do it on the 7th of June, so you're saying maybe, maybe Dave can be incented to ask.
Well, we can always, if it turns out to be a problem.
Right, they could always continue with that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if we have to, we have to.
Okay, so then, May 17th?
Nothing else on that now, right?
Nothing else.
Okay, so that'll be...
In Concord.
Yeah. May 17th.
Yes. Mr. Spears.
Mr. Hayton.
I move that the Community Planning Commission vote to grant the request of continuance of the public hearing, of the public hearing for 14 Concord Street until Tuesday, May 17th at 8:00 p.m.
So, have much in our second, any further discussion? If you've got all the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Direct to Forte, no votes. Okay.
Perfect, thank you, Rebecca. So you want the 17th?
Yep. It's another guy who does that project, hopefully he'll use it well.
Looks good.
Yeah.
It doesn't look like it's a bad thing.
When, when you want to start construction, I mean, is it...
As soon as possible.
As soon as possible. So it wasn't like you're into the fall, or you don't wanna get in there?
No.
With the building toss?
It needs to be going up.
Well, I know you're not, I don't know, you deserve every one of my friends.
Yeah. I have maple trees, so...
Well, they were...
Well, I'm a maple, you know, that's what, you know, what things are being said.
No way, maples are not maple.
The roof will be, is it? That's where we can just get our...
It's about two minutes, maybe, one minute.
No, no, I don't know what's... I have maple trees, so...
Yeah, I think, because you're...
I don't think it's...
You know, you're basic stuff back there, you know, and I like to keep, keep back to...
Well, we get evergreen, you know, type of plant.
But I go out to the...
But as far as the species, I don't...
Yeah, so I've got, so I've got...
I was about to raise that on this one.
Oh, the little school, is that what it's called, the little school?
It's right there, marble...
Oh, no, hood.
Yeah, the hood, the... It's walkable, so I hope that's...
Yeah, that's really good.
But with you, unfortunately, she's like just past the cut I dig for, starting the daycare, so we're stuck with that extra year daycare. It's literally like a model. Yeah. She's at daycare.
All right, Danielle, anything else, anything else? I think we're off, I think we got, I think we squeezed everything in from the...
Yeah, we did.
She's the youngest member of every...
I was shocked, honestly. Happy but shocked.
That's not, that's not normal.
Okay, well, that being the case, then I will, I'm gonna close our meeting tonight, and we're all set to...
Thank you.
All right, and we'll see you May 17th, because May 3rd, we are not meeting, because of Election Day.
Thank you.